And direction, and Lord we just put it all in your hands tonight, in Jesus name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I declare allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with thy regime and justice for all.
Thank you.
Continue with, uh, council back tonight, you have two separate minutes. I hope that you've had time to review those minutes, and we'll take them one at a time for the minutes of the council meeting on January eighth. Move it, pass. Have a motion in a second to accept the minutes is given, are there any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed like a sign. Now the council's special call council meeting is January the twenty-fourth. Have a motion in a second to accept them as presented, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. All opposed like a sign. This time we will go into the department reports, and first will be the police department, and what I want to do, if the department head has anything to say, I will understand, and if you review their reports, if you have any questions of that particular department head, then he can answer your questions at that time. Police department.
Well, I really don't have any, but if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer. May I?
Okay. Public works, Wayne?
No report other than holding suit in the package.
Thank you, Wade. Fire department, chief?
I'm just gonna update the council real quick on the new fire truck that's being built. We're expecting to take a delivery of that next week, and then we train the guys, and the following week we're getting service pretty quick after that.
Do you remember how good work it rides?
Yes, you get it right.
Kelly?
I'm recording the governor's or auditorium talk right about the next week, so I actually have a copy of that next question.
Thank you. Parks, John?
No report.
Housing, Derek?
Yeah, I'd like to invite everybody to our first open house of our first rehabilitated property that the housing department purchased in partnership with the community First Bank. It's on February fourteenth from eleven to one.
Where?
At seven thirteen east Argyle. Thanks.
Thank you, Derek. Now we'll go into the committee reports, community, environment, services, and welfare? No report. Finance committee?
No report.
Internal affairs?
Not here.
Public safety?
I don't have any.
Public works and transportation?
Yes, sir, we met, uh, had a committee meeting, we, uh, were looking at the ordinance, the water increase. We, uh, all agreed to move that to a later date, to look at maybe in June. And that was all motions, seconded, approved, all.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Resources and policy, this is where our ordinance and resolutions come in, and Dan, will you take care of that one?
Yeah, so what we did was assemble. Uh, the resource and policy committee met on Tuesday, February the fifth. The following ordinances and resolutions were recommended to be presented to tonight's council for approval. Resolution number one, co-op purchasing resolution, a resolution authorizing the Harrison Public Works to enter into a cooperative purchasing agreement with the National Joint Powers Alliance, NJPA. I make a motion to pass this resolution.
Have a motion to pass this rev- resolution, do I hear a second? Here's, have a motion in a second, uh, we, do we have any discussion? Not all in favor of this resolution, say aye. All opposed like a sign. Motion passes.
Resolution number two is a resolution approving the installation and maintenance of exercise equipment at the Lake Harrison Fitness Trail sponsored by the Harrison Middle School East Lab students. I make a motion to pass this resolution.
Second. Have a motion in a second to pass, pass this resolution, are there any discussion? Yes, sir, Dan. Down there on the water, is the city park gonna take that over? Are they gonna maintain though, that's their opinion?
Well, depends on where it's at, whether it's in the buildings and grounds area, whether it's, uh, you know, there was, it's gonna, last I remember, I don't know if there's anybody here, told me it wasn't gonna be in, uh, Creek Park, that's a playground, that it's some area there that they would, oh, there's.
Yeah, we talked about putting it up by the playground equipment where it would be safe from flooding. So it would be kind of in that area, there's some open spaces there, that would be a good place for people to exercise while their kids play.
So if that, I mean, if that's the case, then it'd probably be buildings and grounds there.
It doesn't state that in the resolution.
No.
That question was raised during committee, and we were told that it would be handled by the parks.
Yeah, but, uh, our building ready to be here at the park.
That's right.
Well, this would be. Well, can we, uh?
Motion to amend?
Motion, make a motion to amend that. Uh, now, we don't know, um, where it's actually gonna be, unless, unless they do put it there, and then that would, well, they put some out in the other places.
If they put it, if they put it out up there on the, of course, in the soccer field area up there, I mean, that'd obviously be us, I mean, we, we take care of it from there.
What an door in there?
We haven't, it's, it's not, it's set in stone where it would be, I know we were gonna discuss with Wade where would be the best place, um, to put it, that it would be safe from any kind of natural disasters such as flooding.
Does anybody have a problem with an door made in the apartment in there? They'll make that amendment.
Yeah, have a motion to amend the ordinance as written to include building and grounds and city parks department to be the maintainers of it, do I hear a second? Any discussion on the amendment? Not all in favor of the amendments, say aye. All opposed like a sign. Motion passes.
There's a bit of a challenge there also, is this, the scripters there in the first paragraph are talking about the Lake Harrison trial, where's that Lake Harrison?
Trail, trail.
That should be correct.
That's a mispronounced. Any other questions on it? We have a motion in a second to pass this resolution as amended, are there any further discussion? Not all in favor, say aye. All opposed like a sign, motion passes.
Resolution number three is a resolution expressing the willingness of the city of Harrison to utilize federal aidments for safe routes to school. I make a motion to pass this resolution.
Second. Have a motion in a second to pass, uh, this resolution, are there any discussion?
Would you, uh, this resolution here now, I don't think it's been published, uh, as much what we're gonna do with this resolution.
As the work that's gonna be done? No, it is not.
Well, I asked Wade this time before we vote, Lord, to kinda clue us in on this for, for this be clearly a little bit.
Uh, what this resolution is for is we're going to apply for a grant for the safe route to school program. Um, the award is up to two hundred thousand dollars, there's no match required. Uh, what we're gonna focus on is up in the Eagle Heights area, we've looked at several options. Right now, we've settled in, tried to identify sort of main routes to help people cross the Eagle Heights area to get towards Eagle Heights School. Here's a map, I've highlighted the rugs that we're planning on. As you can look at that, uh, the main issue that we talked about at the committee meeting was the east-west route, trying to provide sidewalks from Third Street or Silver Valley Road, I don't know where you are on there, uh, over towards Eagle Heights. Uh, the final route that we looked at travels along Watkins Avenue, uh, and then Argyle, a little bit of Eagle, uh, as we discussed in the committee meeting, will probably provide the best location to cross from Highway seven. Um, the total project that we're looking at for all of this is between two hundred and two hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, included in this is some of the work that we're already planning on doing through the red book on the infrastructure program, so it, it's a non-matching grant, but we get to apply for it, and say we're pitching in ourselves too, so that helps us, uh, gives us a better chance to get any more, so. That's a basic summary of the project, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
But it does have the timeline too, though.
Uh, we have to turn in the great application by the end of this month, and as part of that great application, we do need a resolution of support from the council.
Right, and that's what this resolution is for, is follow grant. Any other corrupt questions? Not all, call for the vote, all in favor, say aye. All opposed like a sign, motion passes.
Uh, we have ordinance number one, an ordinance authorizing certain city employees and officials to contract with the city. I make a motion to place this ordinance on its first reading and have our city attorney read the ordinance by title only.
Second.
Hey, point of clarification here before we go into this, this particular ordinance is not one that we consider general and permanent, it would not require us to do three readings on this ordinance, so a, a single reading should you pass it on its first reading, I would deem that to be sufficient, uh, for the kind of business that we're doing here. This is something we do every year, and it's basically just a housekeeping type ordinance, so the one reading should be sufficient.
Yes, Dan.
Lloyd, I thought I'd bring Baltimore here.
Yes.
Are you still on the planning commission?
No, but I will, well.
Depends on the votes.
Oh, I didn't know.
I like, uh, our attorney said this is a continuation ordinance, uh, naming the people who actually are employees of the city, who also do work other than as an employee for the city, uh, to continue doing what they do. Any other discussion? We have a second in there. We have a motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed like a sign.
An ordinance authorizing certain city employees and officials to contract with the city, and that one passage should, should be sufficient if we adopt it.
I move for adoption.
Second. Have a motion in a second to, to adopt this ordinance, are there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed like a sign. Motion passes.
Ordinance number two, an ordinance establishing the fair housing policies of the city of Harrison and for other purposes. I make a motion to place this ordinance on its first reading and have our city attorney read ordinance by title only.
Do I hear a second? Ordinance fails, uh, could pass the vote tonight due to lack of a second.
I make a motion to table and move back to committee.
Have a motion to table this ordinance, move it back to the ordinance committee? Have a motion in a second to move it back to the ordinance committee for further discussion, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed like a sign, motion passes. Yeah, that is our ordinances and resolution. Uh, next on the agenda is mayor's comments, and underneath those comments, we have some appointments that we need to make. The first one I'm gonna deal with is with the alcohol beverage commission here in the city of Harrison. Dennis King, who is a member of that commission, terms ends this month, and he is to be appointed as a former councilor, we appointed for his position. I'll need a vote to do that. Move to reappoint. Have a motion to, and a second to reappoint Dennis King, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed like a sign, motion passes. The second one underneath the alcohol beverage commission is to appoint Alderman Dana Taylor as the council liaison on the commission to replace former Alderman Wendell Stevens. Motion to approve? Second. Have a motion to approve this appointment in a second, any discussion? Dealey, you can say.
I gotta turn to the other.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed like a sign. So the next appointments tonight is the one Dan mentioned a while ago, our former Alderman Floyd Baltimore has been recommended for the planning commission to replace in camps.
I'll make that motion.
Have a, have a motion in a second to appoint Floyd Baltimore to the planning commission, all in favor, are there any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye. All opposed like a sign, motion passes. Next one on the planning commission will be the reappointment of Bob Dotson. Move to reappoint. Have a motion in a second to reappoint Bob Dotson to the planning commission, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed like a sign, motion passes. The next one and final one on the planning commission is Pat Brown, uh, it is asked that he be reappointed to the position he holds on the planning commission. Okay, have a motion in a second to reappoint Pat Brown, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Okay, that's all the appointments that I have, any old business that we need to bring Now into new business, Troop Sixty with the Boy Scouts here, and I understand they're the next one on the agenda with the Save the Problem.
No, so that's not us.
There they are over there, okay, not Troop Sixty then. Go ahead and stand up and you can really explain what you're doing.
Um, I'm trying to spread awareness of frogs.
Come up here.
I might help. Most amphibians have gone extinct, and we are trying to save them before they all go extinct. And with the walk-around part, it is a five K run or walk, and there's an also Save the Frogs art contest, and a poetry contest. We're trying to raise awareness for amphibians before they all go extinct, no one has the enjoyment of looking at something that is very different from our kind. And, um, Save the Frogs is a nonprofit organization, and they're holding a walk in Seattle and San Francisco this year on Save the Frogs Day, which is April twenty-seventh, and we were, um, wanting to know if we would be allowed to hold a walk at the park.
You have a problem?
No, I have a problem with, I just think you, I mean, I don't think there's, all they need to do is call me and, and we'll take care of that.
Um, we're, we are planning to do this K walk on April twenty-seventh, which is, um, gonna be the fifth annual Save the Frogs Day, and we, um, we're doing.
Thank you, girls, and if you will, get ahold of, uh, Phillip's office, and he'll work with you. The next one on the agenda, new business, is Rick Maples. Rick is going to come and give you a talk about school security and two, three other things. Rick?
Sorry. I dropped my voice, but I may not make it.
Rick, Jeff is watching.
Should we start the timer?
And folks, before he does this, uh, he has been permitted to bring these weapons into this room. They have been inspected by the police chief, they are unloaded, and there's no ammunition in the building, close to me. I'm sure everybody's aware of what went on at the Sandy Hook Elementary School, that was horrible, and we certainly don't want it to happen anywhere else in the country, and we don't want it to happen in Harrison. Our politicians seem to think, and they're trying to pass an assault rifle ban and a high-capacity magazine ban, thinking this is gonna satisfy everybody, and it's gonna make the problem go away, but it's not. And as an example, this is not a high-capacity magazine, it is not an assault rifle. This shotgun, this model was made over a hundred years ago. It's a late eighteen hundreds cowboy gun, and it is deadly. I feel more deadly than any assault rifle, and any shotgun can be made to do this. This gun will hold five shotgun shells, double hot buckshot. Double hot buckshot, it holds, is a thirty-four caliber lead ball. And this shotgun will hold five of those, so that's forty-five rounds of these thirty-caliber sized lead balls going out in a matter of seconds. And it is destructive, it is very damaging. It gets one round, you fire it, that's nine pellets going out, a lot more deadly than what that evil person took into that grade school. A six-gun, they have made six guns with cartridges in the eighteen hundreds, and they're still around. This caliber is a thirty-eight forty Winchester centerfire. Look at the bore in that thing, I mean, that shoots out a big bullet, it's a forty caliber bullet. Check my notes here so I don't get lost. The only thing that'll take a bad guy down who's doing damage with a gun is a good guy with a gun. Our police department put resource officers in our schools, they put four of them in our schools a number of years back. Those resource officers were pulled off the street and put into the schools and never replaced. So already, we're, we're four police officers short. We have seven public schools in Harrison, and we have, right now, three resource officers, we have four resource officers. One officer has to cover four schools in a week, so he spends about a day at each school, and that just don't cut it. We need a resource officer in each one of our public schools, we need a marked police car out in front of that school so people know there's a good guy with a gun in there and don't bother us. The only way that I can see that we can achieve this, and I know nobody likes the word taxes, but a quarter of a cent sales tax, a quarter of a cent sales tax that goes to the police department only, nobody else, just the police department, to get a resource officer in each school, to get a marked police car in each school, and replace those officers out on the street that never were replaced. So right now, we're short the three resource officers, and that gives us a total, how many have been pulled off the street? Four? Four, if we pull three more to do the, uh, resource officer in the school, that's seven police officers off the, off the street, and we cannot allow that to happen. Our children are one of the most important things to us, and how horrible it would be if something like that happened again anywhere in the country. I mean, that's slaughtering children, that's, that's just evil stuff that's going on, and we need to protect our children. We drop them off, and they get on the school bus, we wanna know that they're gonna come back home, and I think the best security we can do right now is to get armed police officer in uniform in each school, and let people know. A quarter of a cent sales tax to protect our kids in school, that's not a lot, a quarter of a cent, and it goes to the police department only, nobody else can get it, police department only, whatever it takes, in cars, uniforms, officers, to get them in each one of our public schools in town. Is my time up, Mr. Pratt?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Rick. Is this an issue that I personally may want to consider? Uh, as you know, I've been in law enforcement several years, and I want the public here to consider this ideal, and, uh, there'll be more discussion on this issue later. What I neglected to say, sorry, Mr. Pratt, was I want the city council to approve this and get it on the ballot, and let the people decide if they wanna do this or not. If somebody votes against this tax and something happens, they're gonna feel real bad. There's no reason that anybody would vote against this tax. I don't like taxes, nobody likes taxes, but this is for our kids and our grandkids. Thank you, Rick. Thank you, Rick. Any other new business we need to take care of?
Mr. Co.
Yes, Dan. Go ahead.
I'd like to be allowed to, uh, make a comment on the presentation.
Okay, we were, uh, I'll have citizen comments here in just a second.
All right, thank you.
Go ahead.
Um, I'm gonna go back to our, our ordinance that has been passed. That housing ordinance, evidently the ordinance and resolution committee's gonna look at that again.
Yes.
We need to publicize when that committee's gonna meet, so we, we've got a lot of people here evidently that want to speak, either for or against it, and it'd be a good time for them to come, if they wanna look at that ordinance.
I am the chairman of that committee, and I will make sure that the newspaper, uh, has the information of when it's gonna be, it'll be here in this chambers, and I will get it out, uh, as to when it's gonna be. It will be, uh, probably, our committee meetings are two weeks from tonight, the discussion that we're gonna get in- The discussion that we're going to get into that, I will probably have a special meeting just for that particular committee sometime other than Thursday now. But I will make sure it's public.
I have one more thing.
Okay.
Sorry. All of our committee meetings within the council, I'd like for those also to be sent out to whoever's having that. Send out to every councilperson. You got that, Patrick?
Sure.
Say I'm having a committee meeting, I want all the other councilmembers to know, do that, where I have a meeting.
You mean other fans?
You know, when you're having a meeting, everybody needs to know.
Any other new business? If not, at this time, we will open it up to citizens' comments, and if you want to step forward.
All right, sure.
Eric, what did you say?
Martin Erner. Rick, I sympathize, I, I as well sympathize with the tragedy that occurred at Sandy Hook. I also understand that the city of Harrison does a, does what they can to protect our children and to do what needs to be done. My concern is you throw out a quarter, a quarter of a percent tax increase that would go strictly to the police department. What I would ask is, have we done any math around that? Is that a, to propose what's being done? Is it too much? When would this go away?
Well, I mean, obviously, the school resource, there would have to be some more done. We would have to first get ahold of the school, talk to the schools about where they're at on it, because we do have, we do have a partnership with the school as far as the amount of money in concern coming to the police department. That would be enough money, and it would also answer some of the other problems that we have at the police department, because our school resource officers are not the only issue that I have.
Right, absolutely.
At the current time at the police department, we are sadly in need of resources to help us get where we need to be at the police department. And I think that for the police department, that would be a plan.
Okay. So my point, for my comment, is that that puts us much for the police department, not only to take care of the resource officers, but to also take care of all of the other needs that have been made public over the last six months to a year as we tried to pass a tax in the last voting cycle. That still leaves our fire department in alert with not enough money to fund what they need to take care of. It still leaves the city in alert and not being able to fund what they need to do to protect all of the citizens of Harrison, to make sure that all of the citizens of Harrison have the services that they're entitled to and the services that they need to function as a growing progressive city. So while I support taxes, God help us, I support the taxes in order to make sure that our police department has the resources to do as you suggest, I think that we would be shortchanging our city if we only look at that single issue. If we're going to look at taxes, we need to fund the police department, we need to fund the fire department, and we need to fund the city. And that's what we as the residents and the citizens of Harrison need to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin Erner. Sound out on that. Yes.
I agree with what you're saying, but we tried to get a one percent sales tax to do all these things you're talking about, and it was shot down. So I am going after the one-quarter cent for the police department to take care of the police department's needs to protect our children. I'm just dealing with that issue only, and I think if the, if it goes to ballot, which I hope it does, the citizens will pass it no problem, because they know it's going to the police department only, and nobody else can do it, and it has, or nobody else could mess with it, and it has to do with the safety of our children. I do understand what you're saying, but we tried that and it, and it failed. We tried the one percent, it failed. So the most important thing to me in public works right now, and it's all important, but the most important to me is the safety of our children. And I feel without this quarter cent tax, it's going to fall short.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Until there's been a study with regard to the cost of a program such as this, I think we'd be, we'd be far, far better off if we'd wait just a while.
Right.
We're not really the best one to make that kind of a decision. Do you have any idea how much money this might cost?
Well, I know that a quarter of a cent sales tax will be eight to nine hundred thousand dollars for the police department, and that will cover these needs that I mentioned right here. And this is a black and white issue. It shouldn't have a bunch of gray thrown in. It shouldn't have all this other stuff about other departments. This is for our children, and it's for police department only. If somebody wants to do something for the fire department, public works, parks, and all this other stuff, then let them do it. My concern, I got three grandkids going to schools here in town, and my concern is their safety. When I drop them off at school during the day, I want to be able to pick them up and see that they're alive and well. And it, and this, this issue with the police department has nothing to do with the other services that we tried to get a one percent sales tax for, and it failed. And I'm afraid if we link the police department with fire, public safety, water and sewer, public works, whatever you want to say, it's not going to pass. And because people don't want it, the police department and our children are going to suffer because people don't want this other thing. I think this will fly, and it'll fly dead time if we can get it on the ballot. And that's why I'm here to ask the city council to get this on a ballot and not let it, it's black and white, it's a simple thing. Eight to nine hundred thousand dollars a year will cover this resource officer, cars. It will cover replacing the patrolmen that were taken off the street and never replaced. We are short patrolmen out there, and if we add any more, we've got to take more people off. We got a guy retired as a resource officer. So here goes another policeman off the str, off the street, fighting, crying, and he's in a school. And we're even with that, with that, we're still three officers short for resource officers. And we don't have enough cars either. We don't need those cartoon-looking cars if we got two of. People pass the school, they can't even recognize it, but they can recognize a black and white car with lights on. Pratt, that's it.
Dan, back to your comment, that's just like the chief said, there's going to have to be a lot of study done on it.
Well, as you can find, it's practically every department and city government cut their budgets this year. And how you can leave them out of this equation, I don't know.
Because it's apples and oranges and bear.
Almost you wouldn't, no.
Oh, I'm sure. Any other, any other comments?
I just wanted to point out that exactly like Mr. Maybles was talking about, I was also concerned for different reasons, the Safe Out to School program, it's actually in the master plan to look for resources and ways to pursue hiring a couple more officers from a standpoint of traffic control and people slowing down and that sort of thing. So anyway, it's, it's, they kind of fit together.
Any other comments? Yes.
Ministry of H and M, I feel safe personally at school, because that's further away. We don't have as much crime here. And I feel safe at school, and I'm pretty sure everybody else does. I see his point, but really, parents don't like taxes. Some people can't afford taxes. They have trouble, money troubles, they live at home. And it's just, sometimes it can be difficult through just paying a little bit more. Because some people may, may live alone with a few kids, one parent, and they already have to pay for the student school, and they're funding for their food. And they already pay car bills, house bills, and other things that they owe money on. But why add just a little more? We could work on something that just a few people could be on. You could hire more in the police department, if, put up flyers somewhere. But I personally don't feel threatened at school.
Thank you, thank you.
I think that's miniature council.
I was going to say Bobby before I recorded this, I appreciate you standing up and saying that and visiting you. Yes, Bobby.
I just wanted to say that I was here for the discussion on the, for the ordinance, the fair housing ordinance, and I appreciate that y'all put that back in the committee and that others will have an opportunity to discuss that with Eric and get that set up. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. Anybody else? Yes, Rick.
Nothing against what you said, but in all fairness, the people in, where the Sandy Hook Elementary School is, I think it's called Newport?
Newtown.
Newtown, they thought they were the safest town in the United States, and look what happened there. I feel safe here too, but I don't let my kids out of my sight when they go out in the front yard. If there's one in a million chance something's going to happen to them, I ain't going to take it.
Any other comments? Now I have one I'd like to make to Joe Beth, that Cindy, and everybody that I've been conversing with over the weekend in reference to the Safe Route to School. I may seem like a pain, but I wanted to know what was going on, because I didn't know the full aspect of it. So if I upset anybody, I apologize, but at least I, thanks to you, you got the information I needed. Any other comments? If not, I accept the motion to adjourn. I move. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.